For the screen.
Okay.
All right, we're on.
Okay, um, well, I'd like to open tonight's Georgetown Planning Board, January 28th, 2015, uh, Planning Board meeting, uh, first on the agenda approval of minutes.
Rob, before we proceed, but just to clarify, the planning board was unable to meet on the 20th due to the blizzard, the great blizzard of 2015.
That's correct.
Uh, so all the business was moved to tonight. The planning board is still meeting for the regular scheduled meeting next Wednesday.
Well done.
All right.
Uh, so does anyone have, uh...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 14th, 2014.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and it's been seconded, uh, any discussion? Tilly, did you have anything?
No, I sent me some changes, I think.
I sent mine in.
I just had, they were just typos.
Uh-huh.
Howard, um...
Looking at.
Uh, so page one, uh, number, line four, just so that it reads clear, where it says, "Board members present, Rob Hoover, Tilly, Harry, and Bob, period. Tim Howard arrived at 7:30 PM," because it looks like we're all around, so. Um, the, uh, paragraph, line 30, same page.
Thirty? Line thirty?
No, I'm sorry, uh, skip that, uh, page two, uh, line 59. I think, uh, if you go across to the second sentence on line 59 where it says, "The disgust evolved into," I think it's "The discussion evolved into." Line 67, same page, uh, the second sentence, first option being that a signed letter from the engineer be provided and it should state that engineer agrees with the information provided on the submitted as-built plan. I think it needed one more piece to it, which was that the information that was submitted on the as-built plan has been constructed as per the plan, because otherwise it's, I don't, it ju- it just didn't make sense to me.
Clarifies it.
Submitted as-built plan is being constructed per plan. Um, and then page three, line 109, I believe that date, um, should be February 11th.
Yes.
Where was that one, Rob? I'm sorry.
Uh, it was, uh...
Was that page nine?
Page three.
Page three?
Line 109.
Oh, line 109.
It was the, uh, solar energy.
Uh, it's actually February 4th.
To February 4th?
Yeah.
That'd be tonight. Okay, um...
So we're continuing that tonight, right?
No, no, February 11th, right, because that's the next, that's the first meeting, sorry.
February 11th.
All right, back to 11. Um, and then on the last page five, uh, line 169 is the good line. That's all.
Okay. Just, uh...
Robert, welcome. We're, uh, we're into the, uh, meeting minutes, um, in the discussion part, and, uh, if you don't have any discussion with regards to the meeting minutes?
I do not, no.
Then we're gonna move on to, uh, to vote. So all in favor of accepting minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sure. I don't know how they were amended, but I assume.
Well, they were amended well.
Appropriately.
Um, correspondence, I don't know, Howard, if there's anything you wanted to...
We received some courtesy notices from the town of Newberry and the town of Boxford. Uh, of note on the correspondence is, uh, there was a request from Alan Olson in a letter to the planning board that the planning board, uh, undertake the effort to, uh, have the Marine Lane accepted by the town, so that's something the planning board can take up for the summer. Georgetown Building Inspection Department.
Can, can, just, um, with, with respect to that, um, do we have any, um, um, the decision on that?
For Marine Lane? Uh, we do, we, it was about eight years ago, 10 years ago?
Ninety-eight or something like that.
Yo, I, I thought it was a little bit more recent than that, but there is a decision, there's actually, uh, it's, uh, two houses have been built.
Mm-hmm.
Three. And there's one lot that's still vacant, so.
Do, do, do we have a copy of the decision, though? I'd, I'd love to read it.
We will, I'll get the whole packet together.
Right.
I, I, I gotta dig it out of the archives and go through it and see where the board left off, because there was some site inspection notes and things like that.
That's a special permit.
Was it a special permit?
Lanes and courts are special permits.
Right.
And they follow the subdivision regulations, so would a special permit have to start all over again?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get into all of that later.
It's a street acceptance, right?
Yeah, we, we'll get into all of this later.
And that's it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, vouchers.
Um, we have one voucher, and it is for a photography studio. We actually found, uh, a place close by that could take some of the old formatted master plan, MYRs and things like that, and reverse negatives that they were and create, uh, digital copies of them. So it was, uh, i- if we waited longer, then the format wasn't even gonna be able to be used anymore, so, um...
Right.
These are maps dating back to the seventies and eighties, so, um...
Got a whole bunch of them done?
Uh, we did. We had seven scanned of lithographs onto CD, um, in, in JPEG format for $140, so.
Twenty bucks each?
That's really cheap.
Yeah, soon as we, um...
Great.
Pay them, then they'll give us the CD.
Okay.
Cool. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Uh, my motion is to approve the vouchers, a total of $140.
A second? Uh, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the vouchers for TFI Photo and the amount of $140.0 cents. Um, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearings, first one up, we have four of them listed tonight. The first one up is modification to approve special permit, 161 West Main Street, and we'd like to, uh, open the, uh, public hearing.
I'll just read it quickly. In accordance with the provisions of section 16583 of the code, uh, zoning code of the town of Georgetown, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 28th, but it was moved to tonight, uh, to consider John Sousa's application for modification to approve site plan that would modify a site plan approval dated July 25th. The modification requests the deletion from the decision of approval of requirement for an exterior lift that would provide universal access to the basement level. The subject property is at 161 West Main Street, is located within the RA Central Residential Zoning District. And as, uh, for quick, some quick background, the planning board will recall that John was in here, uh, in November for an informal meeting, and the planning board, uh, heard what the modification would be and made the decision that it was a major change as opposed to a minor, so that's the need for a public hearing.
Howard, did you refresh my memory? This was all part of a special permit?
Uh, no, it's always been a site plan.
It's a site plan? Because it says modification to approve special permit, 161 West Main.
No, that, that's a typo on the agenda, it's actually a site plan.
Yeah, the application is right.
Does it end up, I, I thought it was, um, two uses in the one building or something? I don't recall.
It was a daycare.
It was over a year ago.
The daycare.
Right, which was exempt under 40 under...
So, okay, come on up and join us, introduce yourself for the record and all that sort of...
My name is, uh, John Sousa, property owner at 161 West Main Street, and also a business owner, and I have, it's my business that's in the lower level there, on the lower, on the subterranean level.
Didn't know if there was anything you wanted to say, or we'll just get into the...
Um, I don't know if you want me, I think, Howard, um, I can explain more if you, if you'd like additional background, um, I, I do have the, um...
Could you just maybe give an overview or summary?
So as we, um, we had prepared, we had agreed to, to put a lift on the exterior of the building, um, so we had prepared for that by putting in a retaining wall and moving the electric in, but the planning board allowed us a year, uh, to put the lift in. At the time we were going through, um, I had done some due diligence, uh, which was incorrect, um, I had agreed to do the lift, um, but the, as I got into it, the cost of the lift was incredibly much higher than, uh, anticipated. The reasons being is when you put a lift in a commercial application, you have to enclose it, uh, you can't just put it like you would in a residence where the lift comes with an interlock and it has a door and, and all those things, so when you put it into a commercial application, you have to enclose it, get it out of the weather, you have to have battery backups, uh, and you have to have, um, interlocking doors on, on either end. Uh, so that, in addition to the lift being more expensive, uh, that enclosure was, um, considerably more. So, um, I came into the board, I, I came to the board in November, I was asked to go back and, and try to figure something out, see what other options there may be, um, and that's when I reached out to the architect who had helped me with, with the plans, uh, on the project. Uh, he, um, the architect had prepared a letter to the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, um, and speaking to them, they, they said that because it's a private, because it's not a public use, uh, it's just an office for employees, um, that if I applied for a waiver, uh, they most likely would grant it, but they would have to have a hearing. So I prepared my materials, submitted it, um, they met, uh, they granted the waiver conditional on me, um, registering, you know, the affidavit which states that it is a private use, not, not a private use, but just an employee use and not, not public use, um, with the registry deeds, which I did, and I included that, um, in the package. So I submitted a copy of that package to them, back to them, um, and then, uh, they've also included a copy of their correspondence to the building inspector, who is the enforcement arm of universal access. So with the affidavit and the deed restriction in place, no matter what happens there, it doesn't apply to anyone but my use. Uh, as soon as the school were to take over, let's say, the lift goes in. Um, if someone else buys a building five years from now, 10 years from now, they wanna use that in a public way, the lift goes in. Um, another option we looked at was putting it in the inside, but that has ramifications with lease agreements that are in place, and because the school's student population is based on available square footage, um, and that dictates how many students they can have, that would severely impact them. So, in the future, um, my thinking is the lift either goes on the outside or it goes on the inside, when it's a time where I can negotiate a lease with, renegotiate a lease with them, or negotiate with them where they take the entire building and I move elsewhere, what have you, or they move out and I just move back upstairs and I abandon the lower level. Um, it just, you know, it's, it's a pretty big nut to crack, yeah, considering the circumstance, so that's why we had, I had applied for the waiver, uh, for the modification.
Howard, was there anything you wanted to add?
Uh, no, it, it, this is, um, just to approve the modification and the decision, and then you can reference the new plans that were presented. So, um, this is a copy of the previous approved site plan in the area that we're talking about, which, uh, I'm sorry, John, this is the...
It's right there, yes.
This is the recent one.
And there's a blow up in the, um...
Right, the lift was being considered for this location right here. All you, all your, nothing else?
Nothing else changed.
On your site has changed.
No, the only thing is, if you look there, the lift is just there out in the open, well, that can't be, you know, it would be out in the open, you have to actually, would have to build an enclosure around it. So, yeah, all this, all this plan shows is that deletion of the line indicated the location of the lift. Nothing else has changed. The striping's still the same, all of that's the same.
Um, Robert, did you have any questions?
The only question we had really was if, uh, you looked into a ramp?
The ramp, well, because, so the ramp, yes, I did.
Okay, I'd like to...
So the ramp, the ramping would have to go, it's, you have to slope the ramp in a certain, at a certain slope. Um, the ramp would have been eighty-something feet long, and it would have required extensive site work, so there wasn't enough room to bring a ramp around. I looked at having a partial ramp and a lift, but, uh, even a partial ramp and a lift still required all of that commercial stuff, which is the enclosure, and then it would have been an appendage to the building and...
What was the change of braid between the...
Uh, it's about, it's about eight feet.
So eight feet, so you, in a, in a ramp, in thirty feet, you can only grab two and a half feet, so you would have to get thirty feet, sixty feet, almost ninety feet, almost a hundred feet of ramp.
And perform.
Ooh.
Yeah.
No.
Did you use that area for going in and out for, for yourself?
For, for myself and my employees, yes.
How did it go with the snow? Did it, did it just accumulate?
Well, right, right now, if you were to go down there, the snow's actually piled up higher than the railings.
Right.
It's just like a tunnel, um, but we just, yeah, we put it to the side. It's a little extra work to do.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive of it, I think he did due diligence, he went to the state to find out what he could do to, and it was very costly, um, as, as much as I'm supportive of the ADA, as I think everybody is on the board, um, I think we should approve it.
Sir? Um, any questions, comments?
Um, I have no questions, we've questioned it to death. My, uh, my only thing is if, if it didn't have HP accessibility, I think I made it pretty clear at the original hearing that I wouldn't vote for it, and I cannot.
So, um, the, uh, the, the motion needs to reference what? To approve which site plan? Is it this site plan?
Right, the revised site plan, and you can just continue the public hearing to the next thing, a meeting, and I'll have the revised decision outlining specifically what's been changed. So if, if you take a, a, a vote now to, um, approve or, or deny his application, uh, pending formalizing it in decision at the next meeting, it'll all be clearly outlined, it's a, it's a one-page modification.
Okay, uh, does someone on the board wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the, uh, modification for the site approval for John Sousa, um, dated December 17th, 2014.
Second? I second, yes. Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded to, uh, did you say approve or accept?
Yeah, e- e- accept.
Accept?
Accept the modification, approved, seconded, uh, means, okay, um, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed?
Neat.
Neat.
All right. Uh, just continue the, the public hearing to February, uh, 25th, and I'll have the decision then that you can vote on.
Motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Second, so it's been motioned and seconded to approve, to, uh, move the public hearing to, uh, February 25th, 2015. Um, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed?
Extension.
And one of the same, okay. Um, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious, do I know?
Um, because...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, no, no.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
If...
Good night.
If the board hadn't, well, I don't know if it's right to talk about it now that we've continued the hearing.
Uh, the hearing is pretty continued, but we'll, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, yeah, yeah, okay, um, okay, uh, second public hearing is site plan approval, 70 East Main Street, Richdale's, continued from the January 14th hearing. Howard?
Um, we have not received any written correspondence from the applicant, but, uh, we did receive a phone call saying that they wished for it to be continued, and they're not here, so it's the favor of the board to continue the public hearing to whatever date they please. Uh, at the last meeting, they provided an extension of time to the end of March. Uh, so the planning board can continue it to the 25th or the 11th of March or the 25th of March.
Mr. Chairman, um, I have a question. When was the last time they actually submitted anything of substance?
For the, the one meeting in December.
That one meeting?
Yeah, that was the revised plan.
We had asked for the revised plans and they came back not showing a great deal on...
Yeah, they had been revised, but it, it wasn't, that, the, from that meeting, what was outstanding was the matter of the fence, and as I recall, the, the, the planning board also wanted a letter to make them comfortable with approving a plan where the improvement was gonna be placed offsite, so they wanted some type of written formalization of the agreement between the two property owners that abut each other, the, the residents and the, the commercial property, you know, and that and clarification on the plan, and, and we haven't received those yet.
So, um, either someone on the board can, uh, make a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing till, uh, March 11th, so it's not butted up against the deadline.
Okay, second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
Yep, so it's been motioned and seconded to continue the public hearing to March 11th, 2015 for 70 East Main Street, uh, any discussion?
I just a question of Howard, what, what, what else is on the agenda for March 11th, Howard?
Nothing right now.
This is my question.
Any other question?
Nope.
I, I think the only thing that, it's not really a question as much as, um, I'm a little concerned with, um, the lack of, um, information coming forth and the continuations just happening and, um, the, sort of, it's starting to feel like a black hole, and, um, I think the, the, the idea of calling on the phone, asking for a continuation versus putting it in writing is, is another step down this, uh, black hole, and, um, I'm just, I guess going on the record for myself, is this is gonna be the last, um, trying to make this thing work that I'm gonna do.
Right.
And I just wanted to let them know that, so.
Well, he, he did offer up extension of time to the end of February, so he, he's got three, four meetings left to, to get something to the board for them to review.
I hope he does, I, I, I hope he does, I hope it happens, okay. So, um, with no more discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, unanimous. Okay, um, the third public hearing is the Affordable Accessory Housing Bylaw. This is the, uh, first public hearing, which we'd like to open, um, Howard?
Um, sorry, I don't have the, the public hearing notice with me, but it has been advertised in the paper.
I think we have it here, don't we?
And that's what I'm, I thought we had it.
I have the book.
Uh, did I give you a copy? Oh, great, thank you.
It's right here.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, this one's easier for me to read, I don't have much heat.
Much better font there.
Two-page, uh, font.
Yeah, much better font.
Uh, in accordance with the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 28th in the second floor meeting room, uh, Georgetown Town Hall, to consider the following proposed amendment to Chapter 165 zoning bylaws of the town of Georgetown, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending the text of Article 11 supplementary regulations by inserting the following text, 165-69.2 Affordable Accessory Housing. Purpose and intent, it is the specific intent of this section to allow accessory apartments, including kitchens within single-family properties for the purpose of meeting the need for affordable housing by adding to the unit's town's affordable housing census. To achieve these goals and to promote other objectives of this section, specific standards are set forth below for such accessory apartment uses. Special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals may authorize such use that meets the criteria shown below, and outlines in section A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H the requirements. A full and complete copy, uh, is available at the Town Quirks Office and Planning Office, and this was advertised in the Georgetown Record on January 9th and January 16th.
Okay, so, um, you're on, if you'd like to come forward. And, um, as you're, as you're getting settled there, what, uh, what I'd like to do is just, um, outline for everyone that, so we'll listen to, um, the task force, uh, in, in their presentation, and then I'd like to listen to Howard, and then we'll go to the public, and, um, then we'll come back to the planning board for our discussion. Um, and, uh, so with that, maybe just introduce yourself for the record and all that sort of stuff.
Sure, I'm Frank Popolo, and I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Task Force. Uh, our intent with the bylaw is that we would like to make it, uh, available for people in town to rent an accessory apartment to persons that would qualify under the subsidized housing inventory, and, um, and open up more affordable units in town, disperse the units throughout the town. This would benefit, uh, primarily, um, senior citizens and young couples, because the size of these units is going to be very small, it's, it's limited to 33% of the living space of the entire dwelling, so that you're not going to see any three, four, or five-bedroom apartments here, it'd be very un- unlikely. Um, it would, uh, it would allow landowners that, an opportunity to rent apartments that they don't have now. Right now, the only way that an accessory apartment can be rented is if it's to a family member. So, this will open up an opportunity for some people that may be getting to a point where they need to have a little extra income to stay in their house, and, uh, this would give them that opportunity if they don't have a family member that was willing to move in with them. Um, it would, every unit that gets rented on the affordable basis would have to be approved for the subsidized housing inventory. That would equate to ten units, offsetting ten units of being developed in town on the inventory. So, that would be a real benefit to the town, it would push out that time where we're, we come under the, um, under control of 40B again. So, uh, basically, the form of the, the, uh, of the bylaw is we, with the, we met with the zoning board and they requested a, a completely separate bylaw they felt that would be clearer for anybody coming in and wishing to, to apply, so that's what we did, so we created a, a new bylaw, but it's basically, uh, anchored on the, the, um, current accessory bylaw, uh, except that in order to qualify here, you don't have to be a family member, you can, but you do have to, uh, qualify, uh, there has to be a deed restriction put on, and the unit has to qualify under the lift program, under the subsidized housing inventory. Um, I also met with the building inspector at the request of the zoning board, and the only building requirements that he sees that would change under the code is that it would, if, it would, if there is not a family member living in both units, it would require additional 3.8 cents sheet rock, fire-rated sheet rock between the two units as a fire barrier.
Can, could you just repeat that, if you would, if there is not a family member?
For some reason, the code differentiates between whether there's a family member living in the apartment or a non-family member, and if there's a non-family member, it requires an extra layer of, of fire protection.
Interesting.
Why that is, I don't know. So, that's, that resulted from my, uh, my meeting with him, he wrote a letter to the zoning board endorsing this, the zoning board endorses it, um, we've been through two or three iterations of this, and we feel that this is the most concise, clear, easily understood, and it, they, you know, and, and in general, will benefit the town. We're hopeful that we'll get some apartments now that may not be legal, the people will come forward and make their apartments legal, and bring them in, under the tax base, increase our tax base a little bit as well.
Okay, um, so Howard, and then we'll go to... So, Howard, and then we'll go to the public.
Yeah, um, Frank, the, just to help explain, the intention is, is for these units to exist first as special permit as in-laws. And then when that in-law condition changes, the owner of the property can apply for a special permit with the zoning board.
No, you can apply under either circumstance. So, if you didn't, if you didn't have an in-law apartment now approved, you could still come under this. This is a completely separate bylaw, so it would be either or.
Right, but, but what I'm trying to, to get explained is that, do you need an in-law apartment first to convert to this, or would you be able to create this as an accessory unit off of a, a house that doesn't have it?
You'd be able to create this off, as an accessory unit off of a house.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be a currently approved in-law apartment.
Okay, so someone could have a single-family home, create this seven-hundred or no more than thirty per, thirty percent
Right.
space. And then it's a special permit.
Right.
And then, just to continue with that, that if at a later date they wanted to change that condition so they could have someone move in as an in-law, they go back to the zoning board, have that special permit?
Exactly, and this, and this, there is a mechanism with the HCD to re, have this permit rescinded.
Okay.
And once this, once this occup, the property is not occupied by a person who qualifies under the regulatory agreement, the permit ceases as well, because the permit is only valid as long as that unit appears on the SHI. Once that drops off the SHI, the permit is no longer valid.
Okay. And DHCD is the, is the oversight agency that would qualify people for affordable housing uh, in terms of evaluating what the salary is? And I just want you to explain a little bit more so people can understand who's moving into these units, because I, I know some people have said, well, this is low income and things like that.
It's actually medium income. It's eighty percent of the, the area median income. And it, and it depends on, the area median income is dependent on the number of people in the family. It goes up with the large, with the, with the larger number of people in the family. So it's not low income. Low income is considered below thirty percent of median income, so, you know, that, using that term, i- it could be a low-income person, but probably not, because the rents are probably gonna be at the high end. That's, that's, um, allowed under the, uh, regulatory agreement, so that's obviously gonna be targeted at people that are at that eighty percent level.
Okay.
Um, as far as qualifying, there's, um, there's a methodology in the right regulatory agreement, and I believe that it involves, uh, there has to be a, a lottery. People would apply for the apartment. There'll be a lottery, a mod, a, um, the term, somebody who will be monitor, monitoring the process. And they'll be responsible for qualifying the, um,
The applicants.
The applicants. And this will all be, the cost of this is all borne by the, by the owner of the property. It's not a town that the cost of the town will have to incur. And he has, he has to follow the fair marketing standards that, that are, that are part of the regulatory agreement. So it requires advertising, can't discriminate, um, you know, the, the applicants all have to be pre-qualified. And then, you know, there has to be a lottery for the qualifying. If there are, if there's more than one applicant, there has to be a lottery for who gets the unit.
Okay, and in DHCD's lottery, they're gonna evaluate, they'll understand this space, say, is seven-hundred square feet, a one-bedroom. It wouldn't be possible for DHCD to qualify a family of three to move into the seven-hundred-square-foot space.
DHCD doesn't have restrictions as far as that goes. I did talk with them about it. They, they don't look at density in the apartment, but they, you know, it, so it would be anybody who qualifies could get into the lottery. So, I mean, it's possible that you could get, you know, a family of four or a family of five that qualifies, that could get onto the lottery list.
Right.
But the way that these units are set up is if you've got a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot, uh, building, livable space, only seven-hundred feet of that can be used for this apartment. So, you know, that's not gonna be attractive to somebody with five kids. And that's, it's gonna be mostly attractive to, like I said, people that are senior citizens and young couples. Because, and, and plus, you know, it's, and the landlords are in a bit of a crunch because they can't control who's gonna be in that apartment. You know, they don't have complete control over it. They can't reject somebody because they are a family, a large family, like they ordinarily would be able to do if it was a arm's-length commercial rental. So, I mean, that, that, but that's a risk that they take when they, they get down this road. But these apartments are not going to be large. They're gonna be rela- relatively small. They're gonna be in the seven-hundred-square-foot range.
It can't be any bigger than seven-hundred.
I can, I, um, A third. I mean, if you had a house that was three-thousand square feet, it could be, it could be a thousand.
Well, the maximum livable floor for an accessory apartment shall not exceed the greater of either seven-hundred square foot or thirty-three percent. So, it could be a little bit bigger.
If I have a four-thousand-square-foot home, or a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot home, then I can have a twelve-hundred. I can be a twelve-hundred-foot, square foot, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, adding twelve, twelve-hundred square feet to that home already.
Right, and, and just to clarify, right now, an accessory apartment, which is, and one refers to as an in-law, is not considered, uh, a two-family structure. It's a single family with an accessory apartment. This Affordable Accessory Housing Bylaw is in the same vein of thought. So, if someone were to construct an, an affordable accessory housing unit on their single family, it would still be considered a single-family structure. It wouldn't be considered a two-family.
Okay, um, anything, any other question?
No, I, I just had a few things I wanted Frank to explain. Before we go to the public, I just wanna read in, um, two items of correspondence I received from the public regarding the bylaw. They're unable to attend, so they wanted these to be, um, introduced into the record. These were provided to the planning board in your supplemental packet. The first is from, uh, Mary Bahar. She is unable to attend, uh, the meeting. She wanted to give, uh, some input. Um, and this is in an email, uh, dated January twenty-sixth. She's, uh, says, "Has anyone thought this through? This is insane. Has anyone considered parking issues and residential areas? Home fires in Georgetown will decrease. Our school system will suffer. Crime will probably go up. If people are allowed to live here with no employment, who will pay their taxes? How many other towns have this amendment? None." Uh, so disappointed someone would even consider this. I'll just add to this. I think that some, while the comments are valid, uh, I think Frank could explain some of the concerns in this.
Like, you know, I, some of the comments, I would care not to, I really don't care to comment to, but the one comment that I would like to comment about is that there are other towns who have adopted this, and it's becoming adopted more and more, all the time. It's probably four or five towns.
What towns?
Sagus has it, Barnstable has it, and, and we looked at some of, some of their bylaws. And I, I, I don't have the list. I could, you know, I, obviously, if I'd known it was gonna be an issue, I would've brought it with me, but.
It wasn't a test. I was just curious.
I wouldn't pass it if it was a test.
To know if this was modeled on that, on, on someone else's.
No, we didn't, because we felt theirs was very, I mean, Sagus's is four pages long. It's just so dense. Nobody can understand it. Uh, we, we felt, make it simple, keep it clean, you know, so people can understand it, and this is pretty cut and dry. So there are other cities and towns in the states that have, have adopted this bylaw. There are more that are doing it, as, from what I understand. As of now, there hasn't been a single apartment approved under this bylaw in the state, to, to my knowledge, based on my last conversation with DHCD. You know, it's, um, but we're hopeful that this becomes, like I said, it is very limited in scope now, but there are towns that are, that are looking to, to join and, and do it, isn't it? Way to get more units on their, their SHI and, and for stall, having to deal with forty-B.
Uh, I have another letter, um, from Bob Ratai. He's a resident of Six Brook, uh, Meadow Lane. Uh, he lives there with his wife, Pat. Lived there for twenty-five years, experienced reasonable decisions by the planning board and selectmen. Uh, it is now time for another responsible decision on your part. The proposal to allow some homeowners in single-family residential developments to turn their home into what is effectively a business is a very big deal. Uh, I expect if more families were aware of this, they would be storming Town Hall. This is an incredibly ill-thought, uh, proposal. It is irrelevant. It only applies to a homeowner that once had blood relatives in the unit. Each of us purchased our homes under the belief that we were buying a home in a single-family development. To change this now for the financial convenience of a few residents is a breach of inferred contract. He asked the following questions. Who will enforce this? The police, question mark? Who will ensure that the actual relatives actually lived in the extra unit at some time? And by the way, how long is enough to qualify if it becomes a rental unit? How long can it remain a rental unit? What will prevent anyone from claiming they built an in-law apartment and then just, just start turning it into a landlord? Again, who will enforce this? Are we going to hire extra people to investigate? One, five, ten, twenty years down the road, when the house is sold, how will you prevent the new owners from being landlords of what is essentially an apartment? Does the owner have to live in the home, or can they rent the home as two different units? Have you thought through how the extra parking required of two unrelated families will be handled? Are, are we now going to have street parking for cars, trucks, boats, SUVs, since the single-family home is not designed to park two families? Any septic system and minimal land requirements sufficient to also handle what could, could easily be eight to ten people on the same land footprint? I could go on and on, but, um, you can see this proposal opens the door to turning residential neighborhoods into businesses, and once again, I will state this is a big deal and not to be slid through quietly. Since this is likely to devalue the prices of homes from single-family residential neighborhood values to apartment business neighborhood values, is the town prepared to buy my house for the full market value before my neighborhood turned into a business zone? First of all, it wouldn't be a business. Um, uh, I think that's straightforward. There's other items in here that I think were addressed with, with what Frank previously discussed. So I just wanna make sure that these were read into the records.
Thank you.
And they couldn't add on where the septic system would not be sufficient to what would be allowed in terms of bedrooms, and, uh, certainly not eight to ten people living on the same footprint, so.
Essentially, if, if I'm understanding you, in other words, that before anything like this was added to a home, the Board of Health would look at it and it would just be as if it was a larger home, as far as the septic system is concerned.
They'd have to evaluate if the septic system could handle another bedroom.
It would be subject to all building codes, sanitary codes. Nothing would change.
And you also have to keep in mind that it is a special permit. So all these things will be cleared, cleared by the zoning board when they have the earring for the application.
What, what I, what I'd like to do before we start getting into discussion, is I would like to do that, but I'd like to go to the public.
I just wanted to add quickly, she brings up a good point. The, it is a special permit. So, this could be something that's created and then fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, later on. And, uh, Frank spoke to it, too. It's a special permit that goes with the owner and goes just with the, with who is approved in the lottery to live in that space. So if any of that gets changed, then the special permit needs to be revisited by the zoning board.
And then it would be a site approval, because the special permit, site approval is required. So, uh, the board, our board would have to go through the parking and whatever is outside. You know, if there's a buffer required, whatever comes up.
I'm, I'm not seeing that.
Okay.
It's in our regular bylaws.
Okay.
You know, that you, every special permit you have is required that, that we have a site approval. That's already there in our bylaws.
So if we could, uh, go to the public, and if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Okay, I'm Pat Ratai. And I'm, I'm understanding, it doesn't get, give me great, um, it doesn't make me feel any better that you say that it has to go through the zoning board. Because what I have already understood is this has already been approved by the zoning board. First, I'd like to say that the only reason I know about this is that I read it in the Newburyport Current Newspaper. When I talked to a few friends about this proposal, no one, I meant no one, knew about this amendment was even being considered. When I read this amendment, I was immediately concerned about how it would affect my property value and the impact on the neighborhood and the community at large. The notice said that more information was available at Town Hall, where I went to obtain it. It turned out, nothing was available. Mister Snyder indicated that the amendment was referring to already-built in, in-law apartments. There is nothing in the amendment that refers to in-law apartments. But regardless, I would tell you that my husband and I gave approval to, for an in-law apartment twenty-five years ago for a man whose seventy-ish mother was going to reside with him in his life. If we had known that this had the potential to become an affordable housing unit, we would not have given our approval. Let me address the requirements. Requirement A, owner occupancy required. I believe that state residency only requires six months and one day to be considered a local resident of any dwelling. That means the owner who rents could be away half the year, perhaps using the money gained by renting out his apartment. Who's going to enforce this? And actually, let's call it what it is, the renter is operating a business out of his house. He's being paid for the use of his facilities, and this would be done in a residential neighborhood. He's not doing it to meet the town's needs to increase affordable housing unit. He's doing it to make money. Requirement B, I've read that certain persons are given priority for affordable housing, including this is, in this, are persons made homeless due to natural disasters, and I found this online from Massachusetts, how to obtain housing assistance. Those homeless due to emergency needs, such as domestic violence, or homeless persons facing immediate threats to their own health and safety. This leads me to believe that quite possibly, there is no lease for these rentals in these cases. So it could mean a revolving rate of different occupants. Uh, requirement C, apartment size. Do not think that these units are only going to house one to two persons. Seven-hundred square feet is more than enough to house a family of four. This past week's Globe magazine listed a house that only had six-hundred and seven, six-hundred and fifty-seven feet, square feet, with two bedrooms and one full bath, selling for two-sixty-nine-nine in Waltham. It included three parking spaces. When my husband and I were first married in college, we lived in a ten-by-fifteen mobile home, five-hundred square feet, and we had neighbors who had children. With an entire family comes everything that goes with it. Cars, pets, noise. What are, where are the renters going to park? No one parks on the street in our neighborhood. What about pets? Georgetown allows three dogs per unit, so now what? Can six dogs be allowed because one unit dwelling now is a two-unit dwelling? Who's going to enforce this? One person who I spoke to, and I didn't get to speak to many, 'cause it was very short, I only learned about this recently, said that the builder of the subdivision on Davis Lane got permission from the town to build there in exchange for rehabbing two units in town for affordable housing. So isn't that going back on the agreement that they had made to revive affordable housing so that single-family units could be built? The entire idea of inserting affordable housing units into single-family ne- neighborhoods is short-sighted. My husband and I have lived in various states, moving several times. We would never buy in a town where someone can apply to rent out part of his house as an affordable housing unit. You could start out having one neighbor on each side and then end up having two neighbors on each side. While it is true that this is the worst-case scenario, it's still a possibility. These apartments would be inserted into pre-existing neighborhoods where people bought in good faith that each dwelling would be owned by one family. A person's home is probably the most valuable asset that he has. Allowing a change to the zoning bylaw that changes this would in fact devalue his asset. I am not sure why, who, who came up with this idea, but it's a very bad one. How are the towns of, like Boxford, Tophsville, Middleton, or West Newbury finding solutions for those who need affordable housing? I would bet they are not allowing residents to change a one-unit dwelling into two. As a resident who's lived in five states and has had to look at towns in which to live and compare them, nothing is going to drive down housing prices with this amendment. The amendment provides for inserting an apartment into an area of single-family units. Even though I know this is not the legal definition, you might call this spot zoning. This amendment should get no further than the planning board, should be voted down. If anyone wants to keep Georgetown as a desirable place to live, it appears that the only ones to benefit from this amendment would be the ones taking advantage of the proposed change. But at what cost to the residents of Georgetown?
Can I have that, Pat?
Well, I amended some of the things, but here's a copy.
I just wanna have it for the record, and I wanna be able to, thanks. Does this remind you?
Yeah.
All right, um.
And I have a picture of a house in, uh, Waltham. You'd like it. So.
Can I clarify just the special permit part?
Well, uh, so first of all, if anybody has any questions right now directed to, um, to Pat, great, otherwise, then let's bring it to the board for our discussion. Okay, so, Tilly?
Uh, the special, the special permit that, uh,
Uh, the special, the special permit that uh is required means that every application that comes through the town. Has to have a hearing. What was referred to before from Frank was that they were involved with this amendment. And it was only there for their opinion of the amendment proposal. And that's what we're doing, we're going to be either recommending uh positive or negative to the town meeting, but it's going to town meeting. Okay? Um, and a site approval is also required for every special permit in town, that's through our zoning. And in that site approval, then the planning board would hear it. And we would take into consideration the outside of the building, the traffic, the parking. The landscaping, whatever it may be that that neighborhoods bring up outside.
What I, I I want to try to avoid getting into conversation, so if you have like a specific question or.
Um, what you you, I couldn't follow when you mentioned Davis Lane, now explain to me what that is.
It's like they've already, uh, no one should have to have.
Could someone refresh my memory to where Davis Lane is?
It's right on Andover Street.
Up by me, it's up by.
By the country club, it's from the country club.
It's diagonally out here.
Western. Country Club?
No, not that far.
Andover Street.
Yes. You're going up Andover and Davis is on your right-hand side, opposite, just before you get to the country club.
Before you get to the.
In my house.
You're going up Andover.
Before you get to Lake Shore.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, Davis Lane, got it.
I think it's before Lake Shore.
Like eleven, eleven, eleven houses?
Yeah.
Eleven lot, eleven lot subdivision?
Yeah.
Got it, go ahead, sorry.
Can you explain that to me?
Brain fart.
Oh.
I didn't understand, I couldn't follow you.
On that one, actually, it's a person who who actually works in this building and she knew nothing about this either. She lives on Davis Lane when they, that subdivision was built. The town, I believe it was the town planning planning board, uh, said that they could, he could build in that area. As long as he rehabbed two bi- uh, two apartments or whatever they are in in town for affordable housing. So it was like a swap, he could build there, I don't know, that's what you're talking about if you, how many units? I would like to know how many units this actually affects it so that you're making this sweeping um um bylaw change amendment. And how many units do you think you're going to be getting if you're gonna, you're telling me or you're telling the town residents? That you need a special permit for each one of these. So how much impact is this going to have on the overall um housing, uh, overall census for the town? If each time you go through, you have to have a special permit and all these things have to happen? I would like to know what impact does it have? I mean, when I spoke to Mr. Snyder, he said, well, I don't, he actually said to, if you recall the conversation, he thought it had to be a um. His conversations with the zoning or whoever said that it was um in-law apartments that were being changed into um these accessory apartments or whatever you're calling them. And that isn't the case because I looked at the the bylaw amendment and it's very, very general. And as as, and I listened to him and say, Saugus, this is four pages long, this is like a half a page. And it leaves a whole bunch of wide open spaces for somebody to just come in and say, oh, yeah. I, yeah, I'll turn my basement into affordable housing or or go for affordable housing permit and do whatever necessary. If you comply with those laws, why in the world wouldn't you ha- get the special permit? And then you have them renting out next to you. And what recourse does a a person who came into this into this town? Who thinks they're moving into a subdivision or a development that is single family? And now they're living next to two families that could have four people, three cars, three pets, noise. Visitors coming. I mean, you have a whole lot more activity going on in the house next to you.
So.
It devalues your house. People are, when they come, if anybody has moved, they tell you, the realtor says, come and see the houses on a weekend. Come at different times of the day to see who your neighbors are. That's why I learned, what I learned when I moved five, in five different states. You go and you see all these things, you're not going to move here. If you see all that activity and you actually learn whether or not, what kind of zoning does this town have? Saugus, I would not hold up as a prime example of a town saying that, oh, yes, let's have this. Maybe you should look to Boxford or Middleton or something and try to keep the housing values higher in this town instead of trying to promote something that would devalue it.
Why is activity bad?
What what I, I I don't, I don't want to get into this kind of dialogue, what I, i- if there are new questions or new information or new new questions in addition to what you've read and what you've already said, I'd like to hear that. But then what I'd like to do is bring it back to the board to start to have some discussion. Um, I I don't want to get into these dialogues with um.
Well, basically, um, I will also tell you that.
Because that's not our job right now.
Pardon?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. I was only able to notify a couple people. Um, the one person on, unfortunately, the the date was changed and I was not able to contact the person. Person lives in the neighborhood, uh, I believe they're two pharmacists. And when I showed him the thing, he actually said to me, this is ludicrous, this is insane. That was his, that was, you know. Unfortunately, like I said, the thing, I was not with the two snowstorms, I was not able to contact anybody. Um, I don't have all these people's emails addresses and and this was not, I don't think this was online, it was just on. You know, I had to copy things, these things off and hand deliver them to people. And so basically. I'm just, I I just don't understand how anybody could uh uh approve of something where. You're living next to two families instead of one. And that's not what you signed up for when you moved in that neighborhood. This is almost like a pre-existing or 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 um, uh, you know, the the neighborhoods that are already here should be grandfathered or something. Because it's like, you know, this is how we moved into it and this is what we knew as as that was going to be happening. And then all of a sudden, the rules changed and we had no, uh, no control over it. And I really do feel it would um devalue the houses.
So I I think I'd like to just um confirm with everybody what Tilly said, which is um, it's it's not. We're not going to approve or disapprove of this um bylaw that's been put before us, correct?
That's up to the voters.
That's up to the voters and so um.
We we make a recommendation to the select board.
We make.
To include it or not include it on the warrant. Not to include on the warrant, I believe, yes.
And and so.
That's that's the sole purpose of what we do.
Now, in that recommendation, and this is a question to the board, um, and and Howard, in that recommendation. There's a recommendation that says this meets um, you know, the um. The basic legal uh requirements and then there's another approval, not approval to the selectmen, which is saying the. Uh, content of this, we agree with, we don't agree with. Uh, how do you tease those two apart? And the board and the board members making a decision whether they're going to recommend it to go to the selectmen or not? Because what I'm, what I'm struggling with is there is, I I have so many questions. And so much of this is not down here um in writing that I can read, um, just on a macro scale. And so on the one hand, there's that issue, which is, you know, does it meet the basic requirements um in in word smithing and texting and writing a proper bylaw? That we can recommend. And then on the other hand, there's, you know, do you believe in the content of it? You know.
May I, um, with respect to that that first part that you're referring to?
Yeah.
The the legal requirements, et cetera?
Yeah.
Couple of things I need to clarify first, just technical, technical legal questions. My understanding, Howard, is that this will be inserted in completely new section of the bylaw. Is that correct?
Right.
So this would not replace the original uh in-law apartment bylaw.
Right.
This would be in addition to it, following it. Okay, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just generally speaking, has this been sent to town council yet?
No.
Um, does anyone?
It will go to town council when they review the warrant. After the warrant closes, the whole warrant goes to town council for review.
I would not feel comfortable making a recommendation to the select board to put something on the warrant. Until I had assurance from town council that it was proper. Personally, just me. Um, I would think that, yeah, that review has to be done, but I mean, I don't see how we can, well. This board members can do whatever they want to do, but from my, in my opinion, until town council sees it. And makes their markups or says, this is flawless and perfect, um, I can't make a recommendation. I'd have to, I'd have to refrain from that.
I like the fact that you broke this into a couple of components. Content and the legal ramifications. I think that we can discuss the content.
Absolutely.
And if we come up with specific questions uh for council.
Mm-hmm.
Write it down and then ask for uh the legal legal uh advice. We could also just discuss the content and say pending uh legal uh review. Because we're not lawyers and and I think that I'm afraid that if we get all wrapped around the legal axle, we will get nothing done.
I I I look back to when we were doing the um. Was it the solar bylaw or was it the medical marijuana bylaw? Where we, we um, we did our due diligence and we came up, we we examined content.
Mm-hmm.
And then we passed it on to the selectmen, recommended that they put it on the warrant, they were good enough to include it on the warrant. And a couple of days before town meeting, then it finally came back from town council with so many modifications and changes that.
It was true.
We couldn't bring it to the floor. Um, hate to see something like that happen, I think we can, I think we're smart enough now, we learn a little from our mistakes, I would hope. And um, I would, no one has to second it, but I'll make a motion to send this to county, town council and have them review this. And I'm making that motion in the hope that, assuming that this hearing is going to be continued. By the time the continuation occurs, we'll have that reviewed back from town council. I'm hoping, that way it provides me some information and a little bit of reassurance from town council.
Okay.
So so a motion's just been put on.
Motion to set, motion to send this to town council.
So do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion's been seconded to submit this to town council for their initial review and comment.
We have discussion. Um, as you will recall, when we sent this, the first we sent marijuana bylaw. And we got all kinds of of corrections. Then we sent the solar bylaw and town council did not want to rewrite that bylaw. And they said, they sent it back to us for us to write it. They're not hired to write our bylaws. They are only hired to review what we write.
Mm-hmm.
So I think what uh Bob Watts here is saying, I think is is I'm in agreement with. Because we should be writing what we want and then it goes there. If you've got any, any, any reason or doubts, you should put it down right now.
Are are you, if I may, are you suggesting that we make changes to this?
If the way you're talking, it says that you're not satisfied with that.
Oh, no, I I I'm I'm just looking for um opinion from town council as to the legality of it all and and the completeness that it's all on all four legs. And it's written as best it can be before we turn around and make a decision to recommend or not recommend it. I'd like to see what it would be in its final form.
In other words, not really participate in its construction.
Well, the construction's been done, it's been done by the task force.
Well, I mean, there are questions that I have about that. There's some, there are some questions I have about whether this is a part of that um affordable housing in-law um section of the bylaws now. Uh, it's not stated explicitly to my eyes. So I mean, that that's the kind of thing that I think that we can contribute somewhat. But I'm afraid that if we send it, if we send it as it sits and they say, go for, it's fine with them.
Okay.
We're done.
Then at that point.
We're done.
Well, I I wouldn't say we're done.
Well, then we're going to go back and start dealing with with it and then it's going to have to go back to legal counsel again.
I I I'm I'm just wondering if this board is considering changing this? Or if we're just making a decision as to the way to how it was.
Well, as 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 part of the discussion, um, I think the reason why um I'm not uh in favor of of sending this on to town council now. Is because I have so many questions, I don't even know where to begin. So until the content gets ferreted out for me.
Fair enough.
I'm not even there yet, Harry.
Fair enough, so and and we are, we are talking about potentially modifying this. And and that that was beyond what I was thinking. I thought we were just reviewing what was here.
I I um, yeah, so I I I think part of this is 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 going back to what our job is, which is to. Recommend or not recommend to the selectmen that this move forward and if it's in this form and it's, I can't recommend it. To go forward in this form, I just, like I say, it's it's a big issue. Um, it's a ton of information, um, there's so many um vagaries about it. And I learned so much tonight that I thought I understood before tonight, that was new information, so. And I I think, I, until I start getting a handle on that, um, I can't, I can't recommend this to to go ahead to the town council right now.
Can can we, uh, Mr. Chairman, can we discuss some of, uh, since she's the only one that is making an appearance on this hearing?
Just because you know what it is about it.
With a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, we, so we have the motion on the floor, that and 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 we've discussed it, so um. If there's no more discussion, um, all in favor of of moving this forward to town council?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so um, motion does not pass, so back to uh Tilly?
Uh, I, if I may clarify with with the the audience here, um. You're making a comparison as I summarize what you've written and what you've written, your husband has. Um. First off, uh, when it comes to evaluating and assessing your value of your home. Those people with the in-law apartment are adding more to their home, we've found. And when you do that, you're increasing the value of your home. So that's a, that's a given and.
And you're speaking to me, may I have my?
Yeah, well, can I just finish when you're talking about the valuation part? That's not going to happen.
What I want, what I want to do though, Tilly, is um, is is if you have a question for for the public, great, but.
No, I don't.
Not just expressing an opinion and then you expressing an opinion back, because then we just get into this.
Do you, do you have questions directly for for Frank too about uh the virus?
Certainly express your opinions and whatnot, but.
I don't think it's my opinion, I know that to be fact, what I just said.
Okay.
I've I've known people that have gotten the accessory apartment and the value of their homes have gone up.
Yes, but what about, excuse me, but if this is a rental unit with, it's now two families in it, it's not. And the the apartment is not an in-law apartment, okay? Which we didn't mind having an in-law apartment. It was a one, we were told exactly because they had to act, notify the abutters. And at the time, the subdivision was only being built and they only had two abutters. We were told he was buil- building it for his mother, who was a one person, one extra person in the house, non-driver. Okay? So we had no, absolutely no qualms about approving that.
Right.
And if that adds to the value of his house, that's fine. But if you have a four, four new people in a house next to you, that is two, that is two families. I don't care if you call it a one family, it is two families living in there.
Right.
You have everything that you have with one family, you have it with two families. Some people can't get even along with the one family, this is nil being next to them. How is it gonna be with two families living next to them?
Hopefully it'll be half better.
And then the other thing is, is that, uh, we've been very concerned in town about this inventory, a listing. We have to keep and maintain ten percent. We've got about eleven now.
And what happens?
Okay, no, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna do this.
All right, let's, uh, that's, that's the purpose of, of doing this. And, and for, for clarity, when we do, we do have a forty B in town. And by keeping it on the list, as you probably know, by, by making and meeting the ten percent, we can refuse a forty B from coming in. And if you, and notice, if you know, Mira's property there, that big apartment, is a forty B. We had to ignore all of our zoning and most of our regulations that we've been working for years and years to maintain the character of Georgetown.
This is getting a little, uh, subjective, Tilly, could you bring it back to the bylaw?
I am, because, because I'm answering to her, her responses about why and the value. Once that happened.
But, but it's not responding to the.
Here's, here's what I'm trying to do, here's what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get the board to discuss amongst ourselves, because now it's with us. And I'm trying to, and Howard, for us to start to talk about, um, the, the, the content of this amongst ourselves and not, not with the public now and, and, and not necessarily, unless there's a specific question for new information. But I'd like to try to keep it with us, um, in this discussion.
Well, since you have most of the questions, why don't you proceed with your?
So, I'm the chair and I'd go last, but, um, unless, you know, you folks.
I have just two questions. One is, um, the wording in paragraph D, um, is confusing to me. The permit shall be suspended if the approved unit is no longer included the S H I and the occupancy permit shall become null and void. I think that is unclear.
It should be included in the S H I, in the subsidized housing inventory?
It's a typo.
Were we talking about the, when we talk about the occupancy permit, is that something that has to do with a building inspector? Or is that for the entire unit?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, it's a typo, I apologize for that. Secondly, um, the, the special permit would become null and void. If, the only time the, the permit is valid is if there's somebody that is qualified to be on the S H I occupying the property.
So, the occupancy permit shall become null and void?
The occupancy permit would be.
If the approved.
Right, the special, once the special permit goes away, the occupancy permit goes away, 'cause the occupancy permit is in on the special permit.
Bingo. Um, with, with all these, so with all the questions that are gonna come up in terms of, um, if you end up having to respond to these? Are you, how are you gonna keep track of this? Are you gonna take notes or are you gonna?
Yeah, I've got paper here if I have to.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna, I mean, I'd be happy to come back at another hearing if you wanna, if you wanna formally give us your questions. I think a lot of.
Well, I don't know if we have time in terms of schedules.
All right, well, then, I mean, I'm happy to sit here and answer your questions as best I can. I think a lot of your, your questions are gonna be answered, I'm sorry.
I, I'm, but I guess the point I'm trying to get at is that if, if there're going to be series of questions that, um, you, for using that as a typo, even though it may seem small, that needs to be corrected before.
Sure, I can resubmit it.
So, that's just one example and that there may be more, and so I'm just giving you a heads up, I'm not trying to.
Um, yes, I'll do the best I can.
Just trying to help you, that is what I'm trying to do.
The, the other question has to do with the relationship between this proposed bylaw and the existing, um, in-law bylaw or, um, accessory, uh, housing section. I don't know whether it's in itself a bylaw or a paragraph.
Which one is this?
My, my understanding in this discussion earlier was that, um, this affordable accessory housing bylaw would really work underneath and inherit basically the rules of other sections of the bylaws.
That's what I was asking earlier, if I may. The accessory apartment bylaws, one sixty-five dash sixty-nine, from everything that we saw in the advertisement, this would be included as one sixty-nine dot two.
Right.
And dot one, one sixty-nine dot one is public treat replacement. So, it certainly is separated in the bylaws. This would stand on its own.
So, there could be conflict with other ordinances, there may not be conflict with other ordinances, but it would stand on its own.
It's, that's how I'm reading it.
I agree, I agree.
Is it, was that the intent?
The intent is that it stands on its own. The bylaw would, as a special permit, would fall under the same requirements as any special permit would, would be that they don't segregate from the area and that, you know, there's, there's a finding that it's not gonna have an adverse effect, so. Whatever criteria that would be in place for any other special permit granted by the zoning board or by the planning board would apply here.
I see, thank you.
That's very interesting, if I may, because it alludes back to something that Tilly said, where special permits require site plan approval.
Right.
But in this case, I, I don't believe it would unless it was specifically mentioned in this bylaw.
No, it's specifically mentioned in our bylaws, previous bylaws, already on the books.
If the zoning board of appeals issues a special permit for an in-law apartment, the planning board doesn't get a site plan on it.
Yeah, and.
So, if the, if the, the special permit granting authority for this bylaw is the zoning board, when there's a special permit that comes to the planning board, you do have to do a site plan review.
I, I, I hasten to mention, Tilly, that site plan review, the laws for, the bylaw for site plan review grants an exemption for single-family residential dwellings. It is, that, single-family residential dwellings, which this is what that is, in spite of the fact that we are, it would sound as though you're adding some family to the single family, is exempt from site plan review.
But this is, this is more like multifamily, this is, um.
Well, I have to disagree with you on that.
Well, you know, it's not, um.
An accessory, an accessory use is a use that's, is secondary to the primary use. That's where the term comes from. I was on the zoning board for five years and, so.
Absolutely.
You know, that's what it makes us, an accessory use, it's accessory to the primary use, it's, so that's.
Single-family residential use and there's no trigger for site plan review that I know of. Correct me if I'm wrong, point me to it though.
Well, we have in our bylaws, you know, where it says special permit?
Where?
And site approval, one of our bylaws, it says it right there, special permit and accessory apartment.
Tilly, by, by, by all means, please, by all means, um, you, you, you show me. Because I'm failing, I'm failing to find it.
Well, well, while you're looking for that?
Okay.
And, um, basically what I hear you saying is that the single family, um, is exempt, um, and this would not fall under any site plan.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that it was mentioned.
Special permits and site plan review, yeah?
What about it?
Where, where, where in, where, so.
Title.
Huh?
It's a title.
Yeah, so where in there is it?
Well, it just is telling you that it goes together. And I think in another area.
But nowhere under there where you, where they talk about the, the, the process of special permit is required that a site plan review follow. Now, many times, many times, and I'm encouraged by the fact that of late, the Z B A has been moving in a direction where they make a condition wherein the applicant needs to go for site plan approval to handle all the details. We follow up, uh, I believe we're following up on a couple of cases like that, a couple of special permits.
I think you should ask the building inspector.
I, I would, I would, I'd be more comfortable recommending something like this if it included, uh, a, um, a condition where as part of the criteria for granting the special permit is that site plan review would be required.
The zoning board would require in their special permit condition?
Yes.
That a site plan be made by the planning board.
But I don't see that here and I only say that because, um, I, I have logistical issues that.
It's gonna, it's gonna be bifurcated, you're gonna have certain of these that are already existing and there's no new construction whatsoever. There'll be nothing that changes in the, in the domicile, because the apartment already exists. Okay, so, a site plan review there would probably be overkill, 'cause it's, it's been there, it's probably been there for twenty years. If you have a situation where you have new construction, then I would think that possibly the zoning board would look at that and say, hey, wait a minute, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing issues with parking. You know, and, and again, that falls under the special permit, if it's gonna be detrimental, then it's not gonna get approved. This is not something that's a law. You've gotta go in and prove this isn't detrimental to the area around you to get this permit. So, you know, I, I would, I have, I, I, I don't, I, that would be something that the, I would like to leave to discretion of the zoning board that they wouldn't approve anything that they felt would be detrimental and I'm sure they'd be hearing from all the neighbors, if there was a detriment, they'd know about it. So, and, and a site plan review, as you know, is pretty rigorous. It's, uh, it's a pretty, pretty, and it's generally meant for commercial applications, is my understanding, it has been.
It's meant to protect the neighborhood.
That's right.
Or, or, or subdivision.
Under site plan approval, under B, per, projects requiring site plan approval.
Except as otherwise exempted.
Yeah.
Go down two paragraphs to, to exemptions, go right to exemptions.
Exemptions.
I would say a single-family or two-family dwelling.
That's what I was.
You're exempted.
I mean, when I was in the zoning board, we had a lot of controversy over what needed a site plan review. Uh, and my reading of it back then, and my belief back then was it only applied to commercial enterprises, it didn't apply to normal residential. You know, if you were building a house that was gonna encroach into a setback, you know, that wouldn't require a site plan review, so.
And I just wanted to clarify, because I, I believe we, we, some of us are under the impression that this special permit led directly to a site plan review by this board.
I did, I did, yeah.
I, I, I have to respectfully disagree with you, Tilly, I don't believe it does. At least it's not written here and I think if, if it were to be written here and added to this, then I'd have a level of comfort knowing that there was an additional review.
Well, see, it's contradictory between one and what you, what you.
Well, let's say this, I mean, you both are in agreement that you think it's needed.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Right.
That you're saying that you would be more comfortable with requiring a site plan review?
Just to ensure that all the, that all the Ts are crossed.
Right, so, 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 so I'm hearing you say the same thing, so, let's, so, so we can.
It's a distinction, not a difference, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and we can agree that that's something that, that, that the board is looking for. And whether or not it's already in here, that it happens that way, I happen to agree with Harry that it's not clear.
You know, it's not clear here, even here.
So, we would wanna make it clear.
Right, but it should be, this would wanna be corrected as well.
Did you, were you done?
I'm done.
Did you have any more?
Um, I have a couple, sorry.
No, I, I've, I, I.
To the meat of it.
Yeah.
My first was town council review, we've spoken about that.
Yep.
Can I address that while we're still on that, 'cause I didn't get a chance to talk about that? I'd welcome it, we don't have a budget, we couldn't afford to hire a town council.
I get it.
So, I mean, go for it. We have an attorney who sits on the, on the, on our, on the task force. So, if there's anything in that that was, you know, screaming illegal, I'm sure he would've picked up on it, but I would welcome you, um, you, you sending that to town council.
I look at it as though they're, it eventually goes with them anyway, the sooner the better, in my opinion, but.
And where I have a comfort level is this is based on an, an existing bylaw.
Tell me about parking. How does, how is parking controlled when you deal with the, how will the Z B A deal with the parking issue?
They don't have to, they don't, if they feel it's going to be an issue that's detrimental, they don't have to approve the permit. If they see parking as being a major concern, um, then I would assume that they would, they would say that they're not gonna approve it and that's their, certainly within their jurisdiction.
So, essentially, they don't need to consider it?
Well, if it comes up as an issue, and I'm sure that it would, I mean, these, these permit, these, this process is gonna be advertised to all the abutters and persons of special interest. So, they'll be at the hearing, so if parking is an issue, I'm sure it'll be raised by somebody and they'll address it then. And if there's no way to mitigate the parking issues, then they won't approve the permit.
Does, does, does it bother anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, when, so when you're talking about, um, parking, what just came up for me is, um, if it were to be, um, modified so that there was clarification that you have to go and get site planned, Z B A requires as part of their condition that you have to get site plan approval for this. And parking.
Being one of the criteria that needs to be examined.
That be examined.
Spelling it out, all of the things.
All of a sudden, what just came up for me is the parking requirements may not necessarily be, the current ones we have may not necessarily be helpful to this particular situation. I can't point, the parking requirements that we have now are things like standards of nine-by-eighteens and, uh, aisles that are X Y and, and so on and so forth. But single-family residences have always been exempt from site plan review, so people put in driveways that do this, do that, that have funny miles, that you park this way, that way, and they don't have to meet any standards. So, all I'm saying is there's now, it's now unclear in the process for how the board would even respond to parking using the current site plan review process. So, I'm saying it just opens up.
What about multifamily dwelling? Because I know it's single-family residential, but it's going to mimic where a multifamily dwelling.
So, where I'm going with this, Harry, is this thing is a, this is a big can of worms.
Oh, there's, there's, there is a huge number of considerations that need to be taken into account.
Can I address that concern?
I believe that's one of the reasons that when it came back, that it was requested that this not just be tacked on to the, um,
accessory, the in-law.
But come and stand on its own four legs. And right now, I'm not seeing all the legs, I guess.
Well, I guess my answer to that concern and one of the things that'll probably, is, is a governing factor here is this property is going to be owner-occupied. So, the owner's gonna be the one that bears the worst brunt of any, anything that's detrimental, because he's not gonna be able to park. And it's gonna be problematic for him if he has a noisy tenant. And this tenant will have a lease, at the end of that lease, their, that landlord is free to tell them to go live someplace else. So, it's not like that these people are there for the rest of their lives, if they don't behave, become responsible members of the neighborhood, I'm sure the landlord's gonna hear about it and he's not gonna rent to them again and they're gonna go away and hopefully somebody better will come in the next time.
I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm, I'm still not understanding how that overcomes the problem of parking if there's overflow into the street, because the facility, the, the home just doesn't have adequate parking to handle two new people, three new people, in addition to the cars that are on it.
So, let's say you have an existing house that is on a real small lot, um, and they have a driveway which runs right along a property line and then their house, and then there's a property lines on the other side of the house, so it's a narrow lot. And what they do is they park, um, two spaces, the driveway is wide enough for two spaces and they, um, that's how they do it, they've got two cars and that's the house. And so, then they add on, um, a, a.
Thirty-three percent more.
Thirty-three percent more and you get another two cars. Now, the planning board then would be in the position of enforcing the site plan review of parking requirements, which says you need to have a twenty-two foot wide aisle, you need to have parking spaces that are nine-by-eighteens and those, those rules and regs were never developed for single-family residential, that's why I say, so.
It's a standard.
I, I.
It's a, it's a morph, it's a, it's a hybrid of something between, it is. I understand it's single-family residential, I get that.
I agree.
That's the use, but it, it walks and quacks like a multifamily.
And multifamily is already in here requiring site approval.
Oh, I thought multifamily had, was exempt.
No, this one is exempt, single, multifamily is. Residential development, municipal, institutional, utility, fraternal, or recreational uses.
Well, this is, and down here it says or two family.
Right.
Or two family is.
No, it doesn't say in here, are you calling it a two family?
No, but I and and what I'm saying is, we we have to call it what it is because the use according to zoning is a single family residential unit, it's a single family residence. But I'm saying it 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 goes be, it's it it looks, and it looks like a single family residence, has to according to the criteria, that's clear in here. Got that, like it, but it functions more like a multifamily or a two family in that you have additional loading.
Okay, what?
I think I can put an end to this really quickly. I would be very happy, I I I have no objection to the site plan review becoming part of the bylaw. If you, and this, as I understand at this process, it doesn't, this thing doesn't have to stay word for word. You certainly have amended other bylaws in the past as the hearings went on. I'm speaking for myself, and I'm pretty, and I will talk to the fellow members of the task force. But I I don't have it, I I prefer that it wasn't there because of the, it's an arduous process to put somebody through. But this, these are not gonna be real complex types of, this is not gonna be an apartment, this is not gonna be a huge apartment building, this is not gonna be an industrial use somewhere. It's going to be a simple matter, probably looking at parking and and some other small issues.
I don't think I agree with it's going to necessarily be a simple matter.
I agree.
I I just, I.
This can become a question to formulate for Frank and the task force to respond to at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Because this, we we've got a lot more to go through, so.
Thank you.
And I'm I'm running a list, I'm on item four and.
I've got one, so.
Did you, did you have any more uh beyond parking?
Uh huh. I'm not seeing it in here, is there any limitation on the uh number of special permits that can be issued in the town? For this, should there be? I mean, wh- where?
I I don't.
I try to figure out where is a, should we have?
I would have no problem with it.
A dozen of these, should we have fifty?
I would say I'd have no problem with that because I don't think we'd ever get to that number. There hasn't been one approved yet, and as these bylaws become more and more popular populous around the state, I would say you probably gotta get some, but all my conversations with the HCD have been, you know, go ahead and do it, but we haven't had one yet. So, I mean, if you want, I would have no problem with that, if you wanted to come up with a number, whether it be twelve, I mean, yeah, remember, twelve would would offset a hundred and twenty new units, that would offset a, you know, major amount of the probably development the town's gonna face in the next six, seven years.
I, Harry, I don't think there's currently a limit to the number of uh in-law apartments that can be constructed in Georgetown.
I I I understand, I'm just, I mean, we're formulating and shaking out a new bylaw.
If you wanna come up with a number.
Let's do a write. If that is something that the board thinks.
If you wanna come up with a number.
I I don't know. I I'm I'm just wondering where, I remember asking you before uh at at last, last year when we when we discussed this, if we knew what the number of in-law apartments were existing, we didn't know that. Uh, we still don't know evidently, um so to ask you to estimate how many you're gonna get, I think it's a fool's error to even try asking that, uh I think if there's a question of um too many and what is that number of too many, and do we wanna add that in, that's that's where I.
So, that's another question.
Just as an adjunct to that, perhaps not as a number, but as a percentage of.
The single family residential dwellings in town in that in any given year.
Exactly.
Yes, sort of like the um senior housing bylaw.
Okay, right, yeah.
Only have a certain number, every year Howard tells uh reports how many single family residential dwellings there are, so we know.
That makes sense.
Yeah, according to the bylaw, um something for food for thought. You had mentioned before, if I may.
Yeah, no.
Phil, you had mentioned before, there's revocation of the deed rider, and this really befuddled me last time. This was one of the things that was banging my head. My understanding, my feeble understanding of affordable housing law was that when these deed riders, these deed restrictions are added, they are added to a parcel of land, so if I were a homeowner and I got a special permit for an accessory apartment, I would have to put a deed rider registered at the registry of deeds on my home.
It's actually called a regulatory agreement.
Regulatory.
Agreement, that's a technical term.
Whoa, what is, is there a distinction between a regulatory agreement and a deed rider?
That's the term that DHCD uses, I've used deed rider with them a few times, and they push back with regulatory agreement. They have a model regulatory agreement that you can look at online, I could have brought a copy with me if I.
I don't even.
And it's very, I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty long, it's thirteen pages long. And um it basically spells out all the requirements for the unit to get onto the subsidized housing inventory. That would be, it is like a deed rider, except it doesn't sit on the deed, it sits at the registry.
Oh, so this is a different animal.
Yeah, it's its own document.
Different animal that we're using for these accessory apartments.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But it lives.
That explains a great deal.
Lives with the property.
That's why it doesn't live with the property forever, it's revocable.
Yeah.
It does not live with the property forever.
Well, you, yeah, I mean, you can, you can, yeah, it it does, but it does, you're right, it can be revoked. If if the owner wants to revoke it, they can pull it back anytime they want to.
What happens if it's sold?
Next.
Yeah, um, this is, this is all new information to me.
Yeah, no.
I mean, I was always under the impression that once you had a deed rider, it was a deed rider in perpetuity. Now, we're fi- I'm finding out that it's a regulatory agreement, which is is um.
Has different rules.
Yes.
It can, it can be, it can be.
Well, I I'm assuming that the process is that they they get their, and Frank can correct me if I'm wrong, they they get the special permit from the zoning board. And when that goes to the registry of deeds, the regulatory agreement needs to go to the registry of deeds as well. And when the special permit's revoked, the regulatory agreement is revoked.
So, it can be revoked, is basically what it boils down to.
Okay, how? Could 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 you, could we go into a little bit of detail about the revocation of that?
How about, how about this, only because I've got a bunch of stuff.
Sure, sorry.
No, 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 but um do you have more new items like that? Because what I'm taking away from that is there's a question about the deed restrictions, um and can they be revoked, not revoked? That, um, and it sounds like they can be revoked. That's why.
My only question is, and I'm I'm all done after that.
Okay.
Done, but I'm sure we'll have more, but uh as far as what I've already written down here, um I'm just concerned about the like to know a little bit more about the the process of revocation.
We can trigger it, and all kinds of questions.
When you say revocation, are you talking about the owner bringing it, taking it back, or are you talking about the town revocating it?
The whole aspect of it, um, the owner says, that's it, I um I I had my affordable accessory housing apartment. But my mom is sick, now I wanna go for another special permit, I wanna go for, I wanna drop that and I wanna turn this into um what we originally had, an in-law apartment. How would that work?
You can, the the owner can voluntarily uh pull back the regulatory agreement anytime he wants to. That's in the regu- that's in the regulatory agreement. Um, so if, uh like my situation, we had, we have an in-law apartment. My father-in-law's no longer with us, so I have an, I, you know, it's it's kinda, it's becoming a record. But if I wanted now to re- to just have that pulled off, I could come back and have that done. Um, with this, it's just a simple matter of writing a letter, I believe, to DHCD, the homeowner writing a letter to DHCD saying they want to revoke the regulatory agreement, and it would be.
And at that point, that regulatory agreement, which was recorded at the registry of deeds along with the special permit, which triggered DHCD's inclusion of that unit on the subsidized housing inventory. That would then, DHCD would then turn around, say, go ahead, and they would pull it from the inventory.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. At some point, if we were to have enough of these, we would have a subsidized housing inventory percentage that could be at, say, ten or right above ten, and then God bless you. And then owners of these apartments, if they were to all turn around at one time, or in a very, very short period of time, request the revocation, then we could potentially drop below with very little notice.
Yeah, but that's also, we are losing, we're losing units right now.
Oh, I I I get it, I know, we need to make units.
Well, I'm saying, we're gonna lose some state units because there are not gonna bring a group home and some other things going on. Uh, yeah, I mean, there is the chance that we were sitting on the edge, and we, and the whole group of everybody decided at one time that they wanted to revoke their regulatory agreements, that would would drop us down below.
But they only do it every ten years, don't they, when the census is done? It it changes, it's.
Well, the only thing that changes at ten years is the number, is your um, the number of units that's used as a, as the guidepost. Every ten years, they look at the decennial census and say, and that's what they, yeah, but that wouldn't change. If we lost, if we lost these units on our census, and we did drop back below, we would become, that can happen during the, that's that.
Between the ten years?
Yeah, between the ten years. So, I mean, one of my other things is I was a spokesman for the repeal forty movement, so I'm pretty knowledgeable about that, too. So, but um, you know, so that, that that's a concern, I mean, you know, if if we were at that point.
We could skew that percentage up a little bit so that there might be a little extra inventory in town. So, if one or two people revoked the um their their.
Well, we only have three.
Just something that, you know, um, how would we distinguish that? Uh, would would that show us that where those were revoca- revocable, excuse me, uh regulatory agreements versus solid deed riders? How would we make sure that we?
Well, I think DHCD issues on an annual basis the inventory of Georgetown, that's on the subsidized housing inventory. And it currently, it's it's in rows and columns that describe uh the the what qualifies in terms of what the use is at the time, and uh they had the West Street development for a long time.
Oh, I know.
But that's gonna be going off the the list, and as Frank said, there's other uses in town that are are leaving that were qualifying you. So, it is broken down in a matrix, so I'm I'm, I'm of the opinion that if if these apartments were starting to be counted on the S H I, they would be quantified in a in a separate manner. We could see what the currently invent, current inventory is on an annual basis of affordable accessory apartments.
Well, my only concern is one that we're, it would constantly, well, not constantly, but it could be in a great state of flux.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis, whereas you may and may, somebody may.
Uh, if we if we were to get a land rush of these, yeah, I could see see that being a problem, but I don't foresee us getting a land rush of these. I mean, you know, if you come back and say, we're gonna limit it to five percent of the affordable uni- of the total number of units in town, that's a hundred and fifty units or more than a hundred and fifty, and that's never gonna happen. I mean, I, just, there just isn't that kind of want, need, or um ability for people to do that in town. So, you know, I mean, I don't, you you, you're right, I mean.
You don't think the demands are there?
I don't think the demand's gonna be huge, I mean, personally, if you're asking me, if we get ten units out of this, I'd say we're we're setting a record. But that ten units is a hundred units that offsets.
What do you base that on?
Just my, just my, the other town, there hasn't been one done yet, so.
So, there are, there are no other towns or cities?
Well, they have, no, there are other towns, cities have the bylaw, but this has been not one approved yet.
Not one unit.
Not one unit. And that tells you that it's, I'm sorry.
Have any been applied for, or?
Five questions kind of itemized, so.
Okay.
For the board to give to the task force to report back on.
Okay, well, and and I um tha- thank you, um, so I, what what I wanted to uh ask some questions about is um I I wanna confirm the the schedule, which is um so the drop dead date for this uh process, for this getting um recommended uh or not recommended by the planning board is the um uh February twenty-fifth meeting, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the the warrant closes on the twenty-third.
Okay.
And and then final recommendations can, the warrant can be reopened by the selectmen.
And then we're looking for that like seven days before with the board, or something before.
The Thursday before.
Thursday before, whatever that is, so that's basically seven days from now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my my concern is that with Harry's and this and this list that, and then I'll go on with mine, but that I I think it's going to be a real challenge. This is not a knock against the idea, it's going to be a real challenge to educate the board in all of these questions so that we're comfortable, um where you get all of this done in writing versus verbal.
I think, and.
In seven days so that we can.
Well, I'll work on it, I mean, I think a lot of your questions will probably be answered if you run the deed rider. That's kind of.
Regulatory agreement.
Well, let me, let me.
And I just, and the only, I, because that is, that is basically the underlying, that underpins this. And the reason that we didn't spell a lot of that out in this is because those agreements change, and if they change, then we'd have to change this.
Okay, well, somehow, and so I hear you saying that, but I need to start to see that. Because that, because in the, in the end, in the end, the only thing we have is what's written.
Oh, I understand.
So, some of, some of my concerns are, when I came here tonight, I was thinking, my understanding was that this was um only going to apply to existing uh in-law apartments. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this can apply to any single family house as is today, is that correct?
That's correct.
As one board member, I can tell you right now, I have a problem with that. That's just one board member. Could the idea of um e- these units, uh you know, if you had a four thousand square foot home at thirty-three percent, and I, and this is really important for me, the idea of affordable accessory housing as an idea um at one level, I think, is hugely important for this town. Hugely important for this town. I, this thing to me seems like it's taking um a a reach that is turning it into something much more than that. And I think the 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 ability to take a single family home at four thousand square feet and add twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred square feet as just an example, that that's a possibility. That you could easily get a family, you know, you could get a family that moves in there with a number of children, um and the issues just start to snowball. So, I I'm 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 struggling a lot with that basic premise. I think um, so I don't know how you wanna address that, but that's a concern of mine, that that I I that that.
Is that a question?
It's not a question, it's up to you guys, 'cause you're writing this, when I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that I can't support this if this thing is gonna be a broad brush across the board that any house, that this can happen. That it needs to be pulled back, and I think Harry was trying to get a handle on that by talking about capping special permits, capping these permits or you.
The number of.
The number of, and I I think he was trying to get at it in that term, in that way, so, you know, maybe that's how you get at it. I I I don't know, um, so uh, so that was that. When when I read something, so I, in item B, um and it goes and it says, requirements may include but not be limited to regulatory agreements, deed rights, da 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 da, as deemed necessary by DHCD. I go, what is it? And I know in writing zoning, you can't just lay, you can't just. And I know in writing zoning, you can't just lay, you can't just take a document like that and reference it, um, in such a vague way. It has to be much more specific.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason we did it that way is because the regulatory agreements change. And we didn't, if, if we basically set out our own regulatory agreement here and then had the D H C D regulatory agreement and they didn't jive perfectly, then nothing would ever get onto the S H I. So we've left, like I said, they left that as the underpinnings. And I would really encourage you, I'll be happy to email you a copy of the, and if you spend fifteen minutes reading through it, a half hour, the regulatory agreement, it'll give you some idea of what is involved there. And, you know, if, but if we, if we make this one document and then the regulatory, it's tracks with what the regulatory agreement says now, and then it, the regulatory agreement changes, then this thing just becomes useless because it'll never get onto the S H I.
So everything you say makes sense, but then that has to be down here.
Well, it's there. I believe that's what, what it says, because in order for-
There's so much, there's so much gray in there. There is so, there's so much-
You're, you're on requirement B.
Right. And I'm saying, and, and it has to get onto the S H I, and it's pretty clear.
Well, all I can tell you is I'm one planning board member. Um, I have, um, never read the D H C D document. Um, it's up to you to educate the board about this. Um, and it's going to be a challenge to, uh, educate me that this is doing what you're saying it's going to do. So I'm just sharing that, that that's a, something that I need to-
I read all of the regulatory agreements. It's on the computer, and I read the whole thing.
Well, I wanna be educated by-
It's very easy to understand.
I'm not going to take my time out, out of work to read a document like that when it's, I'm not the one writing this. This is about a group putting this together, educating the planning board on all of these questions. You know, we put a ton of time into doing our own bylaws, and we educate the people with all the information necessary.
Right.
So, um, anyways, um, I too am struck by just, there's so much here. It just seems at the last minute, it just, it's, it's kinda hard to-
Well, I mean, can I, last minute, this has been going on for eighteen months.
Yeah, but here it is for the first time.
Well, we've had it out there for eighteen months. We've only presented to you at a hearing once, at one time a year. We can't come out to you every five times during the year with it.
But here it is for the first time in the board that we're talking about it like this.
Right, well, that's why we should probably, we should definitely continue this hearing and talk about any questions that you have. But to say that you, you're not gonna vote for it because it's the first time you saw it, it's the first time we could've shown it to you.
What I, what I'm telling you is, is that I can't support this for those previous reasons. Not because this is the first time. I'm not saying that. You have, we have another hearing that this can be continued. And if you can get this all done in writing and can, and educate me to these questions that I've got, great, great. The, um, and I'm just skipping, 'cause I have questions on every item, but if, then, so I go to F, preservation of single-family characteristics. The accessory apartment shall not change the single-family characteristics of the dwelling. What does that mean? What are single-family characteristics?
It means that you want, it, that's a term that's carried through a, a lot of our bylaws. And it means that, that you look at the house, you wouldn't think that it's a two-family.
So it, it needs to be, it needs to-
Please.
So it needs to, it needs to-
Can you control this, please?
You, 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 you need to not do that. So it, it needs to just be spelled out what the characteristics are then. Because it's just a, it, this is how zoning works.
Would you, maybe to lead that, when you say characteristic, you're talking about, uh, the single-family architectural style? Or, or-
Something more than this.
Right.
Anything more than this. This is the baseline statement.
Well, this is the, this is the statement that's in our currently, current accessory apartment bylaw.
Right.
That's in there now.
Right.
So you, you wanna change that one, too?
Well, I'm saying, this is opening up these cans, because, so, so somebody is going to have to make a ruling on, so this says preservation of single-family characteristics. The accessory apartment shall not change the single-family characteristics of the dwelling, except for the, whoever the body, board, person, individual is that has to make that decision, it can't be just based on what they think are single-family characteristics. It has to be based somewhere in some written documents giving them some guidance. So, I, that's just another example. And this is just me. This is just me.
Can you give me an example of what you're referring to? Because I think-
Single-family characteristics?
Every, every house that's built might be a different characteristic.
It, 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 it is a huge can of worms to it. I, I can, that's, that's the problem. You, you might have a neighborhood that, um, are three thousand square foot homes, all really, um, uh, architecturally designed, where you have, um, handsome detailing and, um, and something happens, uh, in one of the homes, uh, for whatever reason, where they can add on twelve hundred square feet. And they add on a box.
It's different.
That's dramatically different.
So each house could, could fall in line with, you know, with that. I mean, that, I think this is pretty simple to understand myself, because every house, like I said, is different, like, um, there's, there's capes and there's, and I, and there's ranches and, uh, you know, I think you're, and personally, I think for Georgetown, we're, we're not that erratic in our character of the town.
And, well, that, that's, that's why I was more comfortable with this when I thought it was applying to the existing, um, or in-law apartments. Because then, what you're saying, it, it does jive. My, my concern are the existing single-family homes that this is being added on to, where there is really a lack of clarity for what is consistent. So, eh, eh, anyways.
You want him to add something like the character of the neighborhood? You, that's part of the special permit requirement.
Neighborhoods can be so much different from one house to the next.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a real hard one. I don't have an answer for it.
The, the thing of it is, I, I, I think it's, you'd be pretty hard pressed to give the Z B A the flexibility and the discretion that they need without language like that. And I, I, I think the wording is, is specifically like that so that they can have that discretion. It's, uh, when I look at any single-family residence, I look at it and I, I know it looks like a single-family residence. It's, but if you look at a two-family, you say it's a two-family, or it's a multi. They're gonna have to see what the house looks like in rendering and, and the floor plan and, and make a determination. They're the Z B A, that's what they do. That's their job.
Frank, just a question on H. Can you explain what that means? Dwelling units and new developments may apply for special permits after subdivision road has been accepted. Is, what, what is that about?
That was in the existing bylaw, so I'm assuming that, you know, um-
I think it, it, yeah.
It's just, if somebody was, I would assume that that was in there. I didn't write that. That was part of the existing bylaw, so.
That, that's like in the case of new construction, the aforementioned will apply to the primary dwelling?
No, that was, I know what that was for. I remember when I was involved with writing the accessory apartment. What, what happened was that if you have a new development, um, and it's not built complete, you know, it's not completed, uh, the neighbors wouldn't know, you, when you sent out the your butters list, what was gonna happen in a particular house.
Okay.
So the, the motive here was so that all the neighbors would know and have the development completed before they could apply.
Oh.
So for instance, turning leaf would need to be completely built out.
Yeah.
And the town needed to accept Lisa Lane Extension, or Vineyard Lane.
Yeah.
Until, uh, that had to happen at town meeting before anybody could come in and apply for an in-law special permit.
So is that, so is that, so should that say may only apply? 'Cause this says, i- it just doesn't read, something's weird in the way it reads.
And again, this is why I, I, I think it would be really good to let, take, let, let town council take a first pass at this and, and just snug this language up a little bit.
Yeah, what you're saying, Rob, maybe it's just after permit, you say only after subdivision road has been accepted at town meeting.
Yeah, maybe that's all. Maybe it's just a word there, 'cause then that would make it sense.
It, it gives you a moment in, in the timeline.
Right. So that, so that was a, that was a question, um.
What about C, uh, in the case of? What is that? That, that sounds like-
Apartment size, maximum, we will apply to, you know, going forward.
So in other words?
Well, um, in the case of new construction, the aforementioned will apply to the planned primary dwelling.
So in other words, before I build my house, I could apply for an accessory, an affordable accessory apartment? Before I even build?
In the case of new construction, the aforementioned will apply to the planned permanent.
Are they referring to the new construction of a, of a, an accessory apartment that is not in existence yet?
So that is-
It says planned primary demo, pla- planned primary dwelling. So I'm assuming that that is, if I want, uh, I was building a house.
Right.
And I wanted to build a house with an accessory or a, an in-law or a, an affordable apartment, that, that would apply. So I could come in with plans that would show that this is, and we've had this happen when I was on the zoning board. We had a family that had a disabled parent that wanted to put a, uh, an in-law apartment on, but they wanted the house to be fifty-fifty, not their sixty-five. So, you know, they came to us with their building plans and we had to turn them down and felt terrible about it, because, you know, your heart says one thing and your head says another.
The law says something else.
Right, yeah, yeah. It was, you know, I mean, so, but, um, I think that would apply in the case where somebody wanted to build a house and as part of the construction, they wanted to include a, either an accessory. That, again, came from the existing bylaw, so.
So does that, does that need to be clarified then?
Um, I, I don't understand it.
I think, I, I think what, I, I, I think what it's, it's, so, on C, where it says in case of new construction, so the aforementioned will apply to, da-da-da-da-da. So this is saying in new construction, you can just go ahead and do it. But then dwelling units and new developments may apply only after town road has been, is-
Right, but there, there, there's no saying that, there, there's no correlation between a, a road being accepted and all of the lots being built.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
I wait until the end and I accept my road, and then at that point, after people have already bought.
Right.
And some of them already own houses.
Right.
And if I do it really smart.
So.
I do it. I do it so that I check aboard it and I skip a lot. By skipping the lots, I have no butters on either side.
So, so what, so what C needs to, so what C, so what C needs to do is C needs to then delete that sentence in order to be consistent with H?
I, yeah.
No, because you could have new construction that's not in a subdivision. It could be on an approved road.
Okay.
If I had a single lot that I-
But then you need to spell that out, because it also is saying the o- the other two.
Well, I, again, this came from the existing bylaw. I didn't write, okay. But I'm just, you know, I'm glad you're picking on stuff that was already on the books, not what I wrote. But, um, uh, you know, I mean, I, basically, if I own, if I own, if I bought a lot that was on an approved road, okay, an accepted road, and I wanted to build a house.
Yeah.
With, with the accessory apartment, whether it be affordable or in-law, then that's what that's saying.
I understand.
So it, it's the, what, what this is trying to do is limit this in a subdivision so that this can only be done after the subdivision road has been accepted.
So maybe it says in the case of new construction on existing town-approved roads. Maybe, maybe, it, it, it just means, it needs to be cleaned up.
Clean it up.
I think that sentence.
That sentence by itself.
I, I, I really thinking that you're really digging into this.
That sentence-
In the case of new construction, to me, that would mean, on my road, I wanna build a new house, uh, in a, in a vacant lot. Um, so the size of my primary dwelling where I'm gonna live will be the dimensions you're gonna use if I wanted to put an apartment on it. That's the way I'm reading that. Am I, am I not getting it right?
Thirty-three percent against that.
Well-
That's right.
Yeah, I think I understand.
Yeah, I think one's, the bottom one's a limiting factor as to when you can apply. The other is basically spelling out what you need as far as dimensional, dimensional controls are, that are in place, as far as-
My, I'm, I'm just sharing.
It's taken us like ten minutes here.
I'm just sharing with you that it's confusing to me as one board member.
And to go back to C being confusing, the way I read it is that you can't have a unit bigger than seven hundred square feet. And there's discussion about thirty-three percent of four thousand.
Yeah.
Shall not exceed the greater of either seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the livable floor area. If thirty-three percent of the livable floor area is more than seven hundred square feet, then-
Then that's your limit.
Seven hundred's your limit.
No, the thirty-three is-
You could have, you could have a house.
The thirty-three is the greater.
Thirty-three is your limit.
Thirty-three would be the greater.
Right, but you could, you could have a house where thirty-three percent is less than seven hundred, so you could add on up to seven hundred square feet.
Right.
But-
Sure, absolutely.
Right?
Right. If I have a twenty-one hundred square foot home.
I'm just, we're going through this. I'm just saying, to me, it's confusing in terms of which is the greater.
So, so, okay, so-
Whatever you want, I guess.
So, could, how, how, right now, um, so there's a, there's a number of items that are, um, and this is the first meeting that we're having going over this, and, um, I wish there were more meetings that we had where we had the time to, to really make this work for you, um, together. My concern, so it, it, the schedule is what it is, and I guess it's to come back to continue the hearing and to come back with, um, answers, uh, in, in writing where this is revised in a way that you are set comfortable with addressing these concerns or not, and being prepared to defend it. And, um, and then, uh, hopefully, the board would be comfortable at that point. I'm, I'm just giving you a heads up that, that there's just so much information here. It seems like on a scale of one to ten, if ten is the finish line, I feel like I'm at two or three. And it's just me, it's just one planning board member. Um, but, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge to get this-
Like Frank said, we, we've been, we've been, we've had more time into it than you. I mean, it was going back and forth last year. It went to the zoning board, went back. In fact, did we get a response from the zoning board that they did approve it, what this was?
The, 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 the zoning board of appeals voted unanimously in a motion to recommend the planning board look at this, and, and they voted in favor of the, that bylaw that's been presented.
Why are we looking at it if they're gonna be the special permit granting authority?
Because the planning board has to look at any zoning bylaw.
With a bylaw, guys.
The bylaw, we have to recommend to the selectmen.
So this is our only pass on it now?
We have to hold a public hearing. Well, we're holding a public hearing, notice in the paper, all nine hours.
Right, but once it's approved, we're out of the process.
Once we're recommended.
Yep, then it goes to the town.
Yeah, then we step back.
And then it's-
If it's accepted at the town?
The zoning board that is the grant, special permit granting authority, not us.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
On the apartment size on C, this is, why is it greater and not lesser of seven hundred square feet or thirty-three percent? I'd be more comfortable with lesser. Seven hundred square feet's a lot of square foot.
Seven hundred square feet would be, end up being a whole-
Three bedrooms, they have three bedrooms on seven hundred square feet.
Since this is a public hearing, can I have it? Ask a question?
Yeah, um, well, what I'd like to do is, um, yeah, yeah, yes, please.
All right. The first one that says owner occupancy required, I still have a question about that, because there are many people who go four months to Florida. Is that not then owner occupancy? I mean, they still reside in Massachusetts, they pay taxes, whatever, but they're not there for four months out of the year.
Okay.
How, how's that gonna work?
That question will get answered when you come back next time.
Yeah, Sogas had a good-
Let's just, let's just do that. So there's the question.
Sogas had a solution.
Next meeting.
Yeah, they did. They, I remember.
Did you have any other questions right now?
No, that's basically, but I think I'm encouraged by some of the things that I'm hea- hearing, because, um-
Okay, I just wanna go questions right now, okay? Um, okay. Howard, is there anything else you wanna add at this point?
No, I, I, I've, I've got a list of, of a dozen that, uh, Frank can take away, work with the task force to get addressed, come back with the revised bylaw.
Tweak.
The tweaks.
Tweak.
And continue the discussion. Right, in a response letter explaining everything. What's that?
When would we continue it to?
The, um-
Looking for the eleventh?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth?
That's what I mean, the schedule is just-
That's like a drop dead date, though, for-
Yeah, well, that's what I mean by this whole thing.
It, 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 it got pushed a, a week because of the snowstorm.
What are you gonna do? Mr. Jim, I can make a motion to continue the public hearing to February twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen.
Your second, so it's been motioned, and second to, uh, continue the public hearing for affordable housing bylaw to the, um, February twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I, I'd sit here and talk about it all night, but we have another, uh, we have another hearing right now. We have another hearing right now.
I welcome you going on. I welcome you going on. I wasn't anticipating this, this tonight, so.
No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thanks. Um, all right, so we have, uh, the next one is schedule, this is the definitions.
You wanna open the public hearing?
Yep.
Um, and I'm recommending that you just keep that public hearing open, um, until. Everything is resolved with this accessory, uh, housing, uh, bylaw. Because the schedule of uses and the definitions may me- need to be modified if that. Affordable accessory housing bylaw is recommended.
Yeah.
Then the schedule of uses ought to show it and ought to be defined.
It it's.
I'll do that in the fall, man. Jeez, what if it fails? What if it fails at town meeting?
It won't hurt anything to.
No, you gotta wait. No, you you have to see.
I'm just saying, keep the schedule of uses open till the end of all these public hearings.
That's all that is.
I noticed on the schedule of uses, you know, um, the elderly, um, housing one. We don't have a definition for that.
Right, that's why we're taking it off the schedule of uses.
Thank you for your comment.
Remove it, cause when I saw it, you didn't take it off.
No, it it's off.
You took it off?
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay, so, um, s- uh, seeing no further discussion, um, all in favor of, uh, continuing the, uh, schedule of use definitions?
February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, old business, Jefferson Court.
All right, uh, there is a. Jefferson Court, she, uh, Dina, the, the who was was in here at the January fourteenth meeting.
Yeah.
And the board agreed there wasn't anything to be released. Um, there was a question raised about easements. Um, I checked in with the municipal light department and you received a copy of that letter.
That's in the supplement, right?
Yes.
Last page?
Oh, no. First page.
First page.
Thank you. Uh, from the town of Georgetown, uh, the municipal light department, in the case of justice court development, the Georgetown municipal light department does not believe. That an easement is necessary for the particular development. Recall that there was the concern about municipal utilities in the, uh, the court. Um, also, any repairs of municipal infrastructure in the court has been written into. The maintenance agreement that's being shared by the the two. Dwellings that are on access.
The beauty of a private road.
Yes.
Ah, I love it. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, not, not yet.
What did I miss?
Dragging it back, what happened? What did I miss?
The, it it's just recommended for the. The developer seems to be struggling with, well, we need to get a lot released and the board's saying. We don't have any covenants, there's nothing to release, just if the board were to make a motion stating that. Effect, that there weren't any covenants placed on the lots and therefore. Planning board, in having received the letter. From the, uh, applicants engineer in the revised plans. Stating that they've been built for the plan, they're they're fine with, uh, the sale of the, uh. Two buildings moving on.
I'm still confused as all hell that what we, I I don't, I don't understand how we can release something that we do not hold.
Right.
Didn't we have trees we wanted planted and, didn't we have a few conditions on that?
I think there were two outstanding issues in that letter.
It seems to me there was discussion of installation of some trees at strategic spots, Rob might remember.
Hmm.
Yeah, no, I do, I do remember those, um.
Right, the, that closeout. Uh, still needs to happen because there's still money in the escrow account come fall or the springtime. We need to see that, everything indeed.
So what is it that he's concerned about?
They are ready to sell, sell the house and this is the way it's explained to me.
Who's stopping them?
What's that?
So who's stopping them?
Yeah.
No, I thought there was occupancy permit, wasn't that what it was?
And that's what it was, it's just, I informed the the. Um, building inspector that the planning board doesn't have any covenants to release and. The only thing that needs to be done is, uh, an occupancy permit needs to be issued.
Right, do you need to sign off on an occupancy permit?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Howard, Howard Snyder to sign off on the blue sheet for the building inspector.
Yeah.
Occupancy permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will suffice.
Second.
So it's been motioned and seconded to authorize the town planner to sign the what? Sheet?
It's it's blue.
Blue, that's.
Depending upon the paper that's in the machine, but it's meant to be blue.
To sign the blue sheet.
But it's, it's, um, he issues an occupancy permit.
We need to sign off.
Yeah, just sign off.
So any discussion, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, um, whoa, 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 are there any other, any, sorry buddy, any other concerns, members, public report? Planning board members or whatever.
I might have missed it, but there's a letter from Steve from Concom.
Yeah.
Is that to be dealt with?
Just a supplement?
Yeah, it's just informing the board, um, that, uh, we received correspondence from the Concom agent. About the acceptance of parcel F by the town.
Oh, this is to, um, this is to the town, with CC, with being CC, this is to the town administrator. Am I reading the right one?
Yes.
The issue is who gets control of this parcel, right?
Well, eh, yeah, the the issue is is more that Concom would like parcel F to go to the, the care and control of. The Concom.
But then that could create issues for open space.
The use of, of.
Rack.
Yes.
And so, I thought we were leaning towards that not being the case, that not go into Concom jurisdiction.
Give the care and control of Concom, right?
Right, I mean, I.
So this is, this is a correspondence from the agent of Concom. To the town administrator stating we'd like this deed of parcel F. To to address our desire to be in the care and control of.
Is it, is it basically that there are these two opinions now and this is just the way it goes? And that, or is this meaning that some, that's, that, uh, might. Take some action or.
Selectmen or?
Right, there, there's two different opinions. There's the planning board accepted this parcel F. Through, uh, the turning leaf definitive subdivision review.
Yeah.
With, uh, understanding of the draft deed would come along later, which it did, and then. The planning board recommended that draft deed to the selectmen for inclusion on the warrant. As it was presented to the planning board in draft form.
So we waiting here to see if.
And now you have Concom saying we'd like it to be changed, we gotta hear what happens, uh, with the selectmen.
Okay, so there's no action right now required on our part.
And it's not really a decision we make anyway, the selectmen would make.
Sounds like a selectman.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'm glad you, I'm glad Steve wrote that letter. Um, okay, you're on.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I I just have a quick question. What happened, uh, with ten sixty-one West Main Street?
Sixty-one West.
One sixty-one.
One sixty-one.
Elevator.
Yeah. It's actually continued.
The non.
It's actually continued.
We continued it?
We continued it, we're gonna get all the, the I's crossed and the D's dotted.
Continue. Till he writes up.
To allow the.
Yes, one, no.
Surprise.
All right, there's a motion on the table to adjourn second.
Who made it?
Second, you did.
Cause I wanna second it.
You did.
We both seconded it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Steve.